I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Minuteman School Committee for January 16th. I gotta get this right, it's 2024, it's not 2023 anymore. And I'm happy to see all of you, and I do want to briefly mention that this will be a rather complicated meeting. So this is not going to be a short meeting, we have a lot of interesting and complicated things to do today, so. And on that note, there have been no public comments, consent agenda, there are three items for possible approval. Would somebody please move the items in the consent agenda as written?
Don't move.
Okay, the draft minutes of November 14th, the approval of list of monthly donations, monthly grants, approval of list of monthly grants. Any comments or questions on the items on the consent agenda? None, bring it to a roll call vote, as usual, we start with Pam and Alvin Hook loader by the pound.
Jeff, do we have to be like in a remote call first, like do we have to vote for remote?
Oh yeah, thank you so much. Who'd like to make a vote to adopt remote participation as written in the agenda? Who'd like to do that?
Second.
Okay, let's do that for our roll call vote.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah.
Remoteski Arlington.
Okay. Erica is next.
Yeah, LZ Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Charlie Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Darren Mostow Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulendine, yes.
I was still a custo, yes.
Very good, now on to the consent agenda. It had a motion was made, it was seconded. Any comments on the items on the consent agenda? No comments, roll call vote, beginning with Pam.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Uh, it's very, Sarah, we, you were on mute, so we could not hear you.
Sarah Montague Arlington, yes.
That was very clear.
Erica LZ Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Sorry, was stuck. Charlie Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Darren Mostow Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulendine, yes.
I was still a custo, yes.
Very good. Do we have any items for the good of the organization per se? I've received none in advance, Ford Spalding.
Um, school committee members, this is my last regular monthly school committee meeting. As Dover's representative, as I will be resigning from the committee effective February 1. The reason is, my wife Chip and I are moving from Dover after 52 years to move 12 minutes away from our home. To an assistant, to an independent senior living village located in Westwood on February 9. So I'll no longer be able to represent Dover. It is not, is, has not only been my privilege and honor to serve on the Minuteman School Committee. For I think it's the last 13 years, I didn't add it up, but that's what I think it is. This has been a huge learning experience for me. Minuteman has taught me so much. I have learned from Minuteman teachers and administration about career and technical vocational education. I had misconceptions and a total lack of appreciation for this type of education. When I first walked into Dr. Bakulon's office, who was then superintendent in Minuteman. What happens in this building and in the previous building is absolutely incredible. I have attended all but one of the graduations, and when I see students' accomplishments, I am so proud of them. And the teachers that educated them. Minuteman prepares students to pursue further education and employment. I have also had the opportunity to represent Minuteman and vocational education on Beacon Hill and with their legislative representatives. Finally, I want to mention, the Minuteman has been blessed by many talented and committed school committee members. They have taught me a great deal about Minuteman's history, governance, definitely policy information. And, and, and I have appreciated their values and commitments. Their knowledge of town government, state education, laws, policies, and the like. It has truly been a great learning experience, and I will always value your friendship. I have been given the opportunity to create and build our current building on campus. This has been an experience of a lifetime. I have been given the opportunity to represent the future of vocational education in my hometown. And of the, and of the, in all of the former 16 member towns and on Beacon Hill. What an experience, I will be eternally grateful to the Minuteman community. Now, let me tell you about the person who's going to take my place. Maggie Sharon has been appointed effective February 1 by the town moderator to serve as Dover's representative. And I am so happy she has said yes, you don't know how happy I am. And you will be well served by her participation. She is passionate about education, Minuteman, and vocational education. I've known Maggie for about five years, and she is well-known by the Dover Selectmen, Finance Committee, and School Community. For the past seven years, she has served on the Dover Sherbin Regional School Committee. Two years as chair, was on the last Dover Sherbin Superintendent Search Committee. Has presented the school committee budget to Dover's Town Finance Committee and Town Meeting. And has served on the School Committee Teachers Contract Bargaining Committee. For 13 years, she worked in the town of Needham, in their schools. She started as a literacy specialist, was on the Professional Growth Council as chair. That led the teachers in a study of steps and lanes. For her time, she was the secretary of the Needham Teachers Association. For four, for four years, she was assistant principal in one of the elementary schools. The story I really love the most is after we met with Kevin Mahoney, we toured Minuteman. And at one point, we had a chance meeting with one of Minuteman's engineering teachers. That teacher told us of a student at Minuteman last year who is currently attending MIT. Question was asked, where is she, where is he from? Needham. It turns out Maggie had that same student in her classes in Needham. The excitement expressed by both these teachers will be a memory for me. Because of her commitment to complete her term on the Dover Sherbin Committee. She will not be readily available to attend Minuteman School Committee meetings until June. As there are conflicts of dates, the Dover Sherbin Committee meets the same time as the Minuteman Committee. In the meantime, she will receive school committee packets, she will receive all recorded meetings and minutes. And I will attend all of our meetings as a citizen and will keep her current. Thank you all, I appreciate it.
And as you'll see in a minute, we are not getting, allowing Ford to leave so easily. So when we get to item C, I'll discuss that in detail. So this is not the end of Ford Spalding for.
I've already packed my bags.
Yeah, Pam.
So I, I feel like I have to say something that, and Ford, while I knew this day was going to come, I didn't realize it was coming today. So I'm sitting here kind of in shock to realize, oh my goodness, this, this is it. I just want to thank you for everything that you have done to help lead this school committee. And I know as during my time as chair, I so relied on your guidance and wisdom. And I've learned so much from you, and I just want to thank you so much for your dedication to Minuteman. And for always being willing to share advice, counsel, and just a helping hand.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
I've learned a lot from you also, so that's good.
At some point when we meet in person, we're going to have a little event to honor Ford. But as I said, you'll see he's going to be around with us for a bit longer, I believe. I'm not going to say anything about Ford today, I'm going to save that for another day. Plenty to say then, but nothing for today. Pam, would you like to introduce the next item and explain it?
Uh, yes, I would. Um, so at our, I believe it was our, um. At a prior school committee meeting, the school committee approved to our slate for our screening committee. And as part of our search for a new superintendent. One of the members of the screening committee has had to, or has elected to step down because of the, um. Um, a potential conflict of interest, or you know, even an appearance of a conflict of interest. And because she was representing sort of the administration on the committee. We were left without anyone from the administration. Drew Connors had put in his application to be on the committee. And you know, we would be very, very happy and would look forward to Drew's participation on the committee. And I would like to move that the school committee approve appointing Drew Connors to the screening committee.
Second.
Okay, Drew. Are you sure you want to do this? Have you looked at the schedule for the screening committee?
I did, I did. I'm here.
Okay, comments or questions? Alice.
I just think it's great that we had two people who stepped forward like that and were able to, you know. Step down for the right reason and step up for the right reason. It's just one more great moment for Minuteman.
And the other comments. Very good then, roll call vote, Pam.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Montague Arlington, yes.
Erica LZ Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Charlie Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Darren Mostow Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulendine, yes.
I was still a custo, yes.
So congratulations Drew, and thank you for stepping up and doing this. I look forward to seeing you tomorrow night. I think it's an eight hour meeting tomorrow, starts at like 3:30 and goes to midnight, I think. Check the schedule.
Block off.
Okay, that's great.
4:30. And I know I mentioned this, but Kevin, if you could let Ray, Ray Shirley, who is our consultant. Know that the committee has voted for Drew, Drew, you'll get all the materials for tomorrow.
Thank you. Will do.
Very good, happy reading. Great. Now, a few minutes ago, I said that we are not done with Ford quite so easily. And I'm going to, as written in, I believe, the agenda, I'm going to make a, suggest a number of motions. To allow Ford to remain active in areas that he is currently active in, in which we can still use his particular skill set. So the three areas are the school building committee. Now, the school building committee, I imagine, will be dissolved once the project is closed. Is that correct, Ford?
That's right, we, we're waiting for the MSBA to finally get rid of us. May happen April, May, but we're going to have to have a building committee meeting prior to that, so.
Okay, so they won't, they theoretically don't have a lot more work to do. But it has to remain active until everything is officially complete by the state. Uh, the other one is the capital planning committee, which is our kind of long-term look at capital projects. And the third item currently is to remain a liaison with Leslie University as done so far, since he is the one. Currently most knowledgeable about that. Now, we can change these whenever we want to. Just allowing him to continue in these roles for as long as we believe it is appropriate and he is willing to do it. So I'm going to make the three motions, and then you can dispose of them as you see fit. Um, I move that after stepping down from the Minuteman School Committee, Ford Spalding remain as the chair. And as a voting member of the Minuteman School Building Committee.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that particular motion? Steve.
Probably Alice is going to say the same thing as I, but I believe our, our policies allow us to, to put other people on. For example, we did Jim Gamel on the OPEB Study Committee. So I think for the record, we ought to give that as a reason.
Absolutely. Now, the school committee, building committee is different because that's mostly people who are not members of the school committee. As it is, and they all get a vote anyways. So that's a little bit different, but that policy is important to the remaining votes. I think it was Alice DeLuca who had the foresight to say that we should take this up in order to get. External expertise to help us out when we, when we need it. So I think we can thank Alice for that. So anyway, so there it is, the motion is on the table. Has it been seconded yet?
Yes.
Second, okay. Any further discussion, motion on the table? Alice, is your hand up?
I was going to try to give you the, the letter code for the policy. Um, it's, we're the only school committee that has this policy. But of course I can't find it.
While she's doing that, it's also important with this, the MSBA actually has a hand in approving the building committee. And we approved it, but they also did.
Well, it's not changing.
It's B, B D E X. It was reviewed by, yeah, it was reviewed by our council.
Very good. Any other comments or questions on this motion? Roll call vote, Pam.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Montague Arlington, yes.
Erica LZ Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Charlie Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Darren Mostow Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulendine, yes.
I was still a custo, yes.
Very good. Second of the three motions, if I can find it, I wrote it here somewhere. Where did it go? Come on, here we go. I move that after stepping down from the Minuteman School Committee, Ford Spalding be appointed as a non-voting member of the Minuteman Capital Planning Committee.
Second.
Okay, so this is different from the, uh, building committee. And that this is a committee in which it is usually mostly school committee members. So it would be appropriate for him probably to be a non-voting member of that. I don't even know if. The policy would allow us to have him being a voting member. So that's why I specified a non-voting member. So do I have a second for the motion? That's second, second, discussion. Roll call vote, Pam.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Montague Arlington, yes.
Erica LZ Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Charlie Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Darren Mostow Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulendine, yes.
I was still a custo, yes.
And finally, I move that after stepping down from the Minuteman School Committee, Ford Spalding be appointed as school committee liaison with Leslie University.
Okay.
This is not a voting role, it's a, really a communications role, so I don't have to state. A non-voting member, because there's no votes involved in this. He's the liaison, he gathers information, he talks to them, he helps us with the issue. No votes required. Any comments or questions? Very well then, Pam.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Montague Arlington, yes.
Erica LZ Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Charlie Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Darren Mostow Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulendine, yes.
I was still a custo, yes.
Just a future reference, I do believe that there's one other thing that Ford will be involved with at least short term. I think that he'll probably want to be involved with the admissions lottery issue, which we're going to talk about a little bit tonight. And very extensively at our next meeting, okay? Thank you all very much, and thank you Ford for willingness, uh, to, actually, you're going to think it's right now. I think, thank you very much for your willingness to continue in these roles. Even though you will not be receiving the huge pay of a school community member anymore, this is just free. I do believe though, that the next item D, state admissions proposal issue, and. I think that you'd like to introduce that for the school committee.
People are going to get tired of me, you know that? Maybe they already are.
Um, there are a couple of issues in bills floating around the State House right now. Uh, one is the request to establish a one-size-fits-all blind lottery. For admissions in the state's vocational schools. This is an attempt to solve the 6,000 to 11,000, and that number is all over the place. But that was the latest number I saw, waiting list to help more students of diversity into vocational schools. MAVA, the Massachusetts Association of Vocational Administrators. Um, and my opinion that this idea does nothing to solve that problem. Of students being denied an education, nor does it help disadvantaged students to gain entrance by a lottery by chance. It doesn't increase one seat in the state. That was proposed by the Gateway Communities, which is my understanding, sort of the larger cities and, and the state. The second is a request, is a request for additional funding to increase access. Seats for students in comprehensive vocational schools like Minuteman. And to provide an increase in chapter 74 vocational curriculums in the traditional high schools. This is the right solution. However, the cost is quite high. This is an act to improve access, I said, opportunity and capacity in Massachusetts vocational schools. And it's House Bill 538 and Senate 7274. That's been proposed by MAVA. On January 9, I received a phone call from Representative Denise Garlick. She represents Jeff's community of Needham and my community of Dover. And is the House Chair of the Joint Committee on Education. And she called me requesting my advice and help on this issue. And in so doing, asked me to set up a meeting with her to discuss the issue. I have done so, and that meeting is going to be January 24, and I'm going to have with me. Steve Sharick, who's the executive director of MAVA, actually, he has a strong connection to Minuteman, he used to work here. Superintendent Ernie Hool of Assabette, Jason Evans, Superintendent of Diamond Vocational School. And two of MAVA's consultant lobbyists. Uh, I, we're also going to have a meeting on the 19th. Uh, and on the 19th, we're going to have a planning meeting, uh, of which both Steve and I think is very important. We're going to have a planning meeting as to exactly what we're going to talk to Denise Garlick about. She said to me on the phone, she's looking for sort of a compromise that can work out. And I think some of us feel very strongly compromised is not the, the route to go. The route to go is to increase seats, but we're going to have a strategy meeting. And also Ernie is the superintendent super of Assabette, he also has a connection to Minuteman. And Ernie is quoted a lot, or Assabette has quoted a lot, as that they have a open lottery. Well, they do not. They have a lottery, but that's after they go basically through the same process that we go through. And then they still have some students out there, and then they have a lottery, but, but it still has to go through a, a process. After the 19th, I want to report back to you, and it may be before a school committee, I can do it, we can do it in writing. Um, with a strategy that probably would work for Minuteman, excuse me. And, but it will entail probably a school committee, uh, letter that would go to various sources. It would include each of you contacting your boards of selectmen to discuss the issue with them, and we can give you talking points. But I think it's important that you talk to them, because this could have a negative effect, at least the first one, on just our regional agreement. It could mean a, a need to change our regional agreement, and it could also have a very strong effect on our admissions policy, so. And that's not just ours, that's all, every vocational school. So we're going to, we'll have that, and it's also going to be a request for you to reach out to your Senator, state senators and reps. Because I just think it's, the proposal is, is outlandish, that's my own feeling. So you will hear more back from me. In your packet was information that we included on this subject. Really, there's a lot of stuff that comes out in the newspapers a lot, you could even Google it. There's, the group is, who is proactive in wanting to have a, a open lottery is, is being very aggressive and, and what they're looking for. I do know that the MAVA bill that was submitted has a lot of strong support from our legislators, but. This is going to work. I think it's going to be, I don't know the timing, but I think the timing is critical. I don't think this is something that we can put on our back burner and just figure out when we want to attend to it. I think we're going to have to attend to it fairly soon. Again, I'll know more on the 19th. That's my report.
Okay, so just to give you an idea of how serious this could be for us. Imagine if there really was just a blind lottery, and your town, although still having to pay their annual payment. Had no seats available to them because of the lottery, and that could happen. So it would be very unfortunate, it would not solve the problem they've identified. Because the real solution is, as Ford mentioned, to create more seats. And I didn't want to spend too much time on this meeting, because we have a lot of stuff on our agenda, and it's good to introduce a topic first. So you've heard Ford's introduction, you have materials in the packet. And what I propose is that we have a meeting on the 29th, which is our, our public budget hearing, which will be a remote meeting. I expect that part to be fairly short this year. So my recommendation is that we add to that a more extensive time to discuss this issue, and maybe have some guest speakers on it. And then, uh, come up with a decision as to what our stand is and how we want to proceed in being activists. On this issue, based on advice from Ford, from whoever are the speakers we have, and from our own understanding of the issue. So that would be kind of the tame frame, a timeframe would be our next meeting would be the 29th on this, and then we move forward. Alice.
That sounds like a good idea. I know that in the Shoba Valley Tech has already, their school committee has already sent a letter. Uh, and that Massachusetts Association of School Committees, MASCs Division 8, is ramping up to include. The regional vocational technical school committees and sort of statewide effort as well. And I believe Tri-County may be in the process of getting a letter ready, so as Ford said, there's no time to waste. And it is a potential element of chaos.
Pam.
So, um, I was hoping to get our enrollment committee or EMAC committee together for a meeting. But not till, um, after, but it wouldn't be until after the 29th, so I. Um, so I, perhaps what we can do is, what comes out on the 29th, the committee then can be looking and doing whatever follow-up we do. Because I don't think it's going to be possible for us to meet before that.
Jeff.
Yes, Ford.
Let me just add one thing, that the people that I mentioned are going to be at this meeting. We have already testified before the Joint Committee on Education. Did that about six weeks ago, when we went up to the State House and, and testified. And there was a large group doing it for the, for the lottery, and also our group was fairly large. And I just don't know where the committee said, because they just sat there and asked a few great questions. But there were no, no indication of how anybody felt at the committee. But we've already testified up there, and that won't be the last time.
Uh, my personal opinion is that we really need to get our member towns involved in it. So they're hearing not just from people from our career tech schools, they're hearing from the select boards, and maybe the fincoms from our member towns. So I think that that's one of the suggestions, is that we have very strong conversations with our communities. And get them to be involved in this issue as well, is my guess. Any other questions or comments before we move on? Again, much more extensive conversation on the 29th. Very good. If you have not read the materials in the packet regarding this issue, please read them. If you have read them, read them again. And keep your ears open and your eyes open for newspaper articles or anything that comes up. Um, on this issue in the media, or social media, or other media, okay? Very good, thank you very much Ford, and we are not sick of you yet, so don't worry about it. Principals report. Katie, you have a lot of items here, I'm looking forward to it.
Great. All right, see if I can, Julia, can you allow me to share my screen?
I'll take Katie.
Great, thank you. All right. All right, um, so. All right, so I just want to thank River and Riley for joining us tonight, they're here to do their student reports, so River, I'll let you start.
All right, so as a midway through senior year, we, the student, senior student council decided to do a little event. For senior trivia, which would be after school. On a Tuesday, January thirtieth. And which those seniors who attend, we're going to play a game of guessing. Who's baby pictures is what senior, I don't know, just some fun way to gather up everybody, celebrate that. We're already halfway through, and there will be some prizes for those who win, so that will be exciting. And yeah, just get everybody together, celebrate.
Great, thank you, River. And then we have Riley, who will be sharing out some updates on our prom.
So both student councils for the juniors and seniors have been working very hard. To start planning the prom this year, that will be a conjoined prom between the two grades. It's going to take. I'm middle. Country club.
Riley's breaking up, it's hard to hear.
I show a new hand. I'm sure, now I know some people are like, oh my goodness, New Hampshire, that's very far away, but it's actually, oh. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Our theme this year is a masquerade ball. We wanted to kind of spice things up a little bit and. Create a new theme for this year. It's going to be on Friday, May tenth, from six P M to ten P M. We. Took a lot of care in deciding on food options, so there's going to be drinks, some salads, pasta dishes, vegetables. And even some desserts. And we're also trying to incorporate some fun things for the students as well, such as a photo booth. And we're also currently working on that and as well as getting a DJ. So we're all really looking forward to it, and we're actually meeting tomorrow. To move forward with decorations and more planning for this event.
Great, thank you, Riley, any questions for River or Riley?
I have a couple of questions on the prom. Is that the room that the prom is going to be in, the one that we have the picture of there?
Um, so we're not exactly sure what room we're going to be in, but it's kind of a similar. I guess setup, but we'll have like a dance floor in there too, they have a lot of great options, a lot of. They actually host a lot of events and. So they have some great venue rooms as well as places outside for like photos, they have an outdoor patio. That students can go outside and. Honestly, I'm really excited to see the views there because it looks very nice.
Is it typical for Minuteman to have the junior and senior proms together?
So for the past few years, we have been doing a conjoined prom. Just because you know, prices are going up and it does get very expensive. So that way, when we do do a conjoined prom, more people can go and it's also easier to. Put something nicer on for the students.
I would say also class size is something that definitely affected this. Past few years, classes have been growing, but I feel like it would be very low. If it was like class of. Twenty twenty, that would have been a very, it was only senior prom. Not that, not that many people.
I just think it's a fabulous idea to have them together as long as everybody gets along. And I love your notice there, I think that's very artistically and well done, very attractive.
Dakota Moliner actually created the flyer that we're going to be hopefully getting out soon, so. People can start getting ready and going dress shopping, tuxedos, everything to get ready for prom.
And the other questions or comments? Scary thought, half of the year over already, isn't it, okay? Great, well, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you, River.
For River and Riley.
So to report on, we had members of the British Embassy come visit us this past Friday. So they're here for about two hours, I'd like to give a big shout out to Nancy Palladino who put on. She was our main contact at Minuteman to arrange the visit, she did a wonderful job. You know, started with a UK themed breakfast spread, so we actually. Some members of our culinary department, they were looking up the most popular, you know, toppings to put on biscuits and all the types of teas. And every table had a different theme for a different part of the UK, which Nancy had a lot of this UK stuff that she brought in to help decorate, so it's just a really nice welcome for them. We had some roundtable discussions with them, they were specifically interested in vocational education, talking about disadvantaged gaps, some tech in AI. Some requirements in terms of our testing and graduation, and then just some school absences and kind of how they're handling life post pandemic. They also took a tour, so they took a quick tour of our science, our health and engineering programs. They also visited the Paul Revere capture site while they were so close here. And then we had members of the British Embassy, I just have them listed here, there's a great variety of folks, some of them are stations here in the US, some of them are. Down in the Pentagon area, Washington, and then some of them are from London. So we had a great mix of folks, one of them is actually from Arlington, who's even looking at Minuteman possibly in the future, she has two young kids, so it's kind of a dual visit for her, so she was pretty excited to be here. But it's just very cool to learn from them some of the differences in education systems. They said they learned a lot, they had a great visit, and they were, it was a quick turnaround, they were actually catching a flight back to. England later that evening, but it was a good visit. Any questions on the visit?
Katie, I'm just curious, how did it come to be that they connected with Minuteman?
Sure, so one of the women who was on the tour, she lives in Arlington. So they knew that they were coming, they were visiting a bunch of different school systems, so she had recommended that she'd heard a lot of great things about Minuteman for them to stop by and visit Minuteman, so she was the connection.
Great, thank you.
Ford? Ford's on mute, I think.
I could be wrong and Katie, you can correct me, but I believe we were. The vocational high school they visited, but they also visited MIT and Harvard, so we are in the right company. For what their interests are, what I found interesting when we were there is. Their vocational schools are strictly vocational and not, they do not have academics, and I think they were. Fascinated that we were able to co-mingle them both, and I think that made a huge impression.
Yeah, very good, thank you.
All right, we have a community event coming up this Saturday, which we're very excited for, it's a winter wonderland, it's the first time that we've run this event. So it'll be happening this Saturday morning from about nine to eleven thirty. We have a bunch of staff members that are working along with some administrators, we have about thirty student volunteers and workers that are coming to help out at the events. The admission includes hot chocolate, a sugar cookie decorating popcorn, we're going to have a bunch of children's games and crafts running. The main purpose of the event is that we, it's two folds, we're marketing Minuteman to a younger audience. But we're also raising money for some senior scholarships through a bunch of different activities, we'll have some raffles, we have an indoor snowball fight going, we're going to bring out some of the animals from animal science for some picture opportunities. We're going to have some pop up sales and chili. We're going to have carpentry, we need some little wooden cars that we're going to put down the ramps, and then we're going to have a couple little. Engineer type build the challenges with the kids, so we're really looking forward to it, it's supposed to be nice winter weather in terms of no snow but cold, so I think a lot of people will appreciate being inside on Saturday, some little guys. Any questions about the event? Great. And just to give you a heads up on some upcoming school and parent presentations. So we have one on Monday and Monday, the twenty ninth, and I should say Tuesday, the thirtieth. That signs of suicide, it's a refresher for our juniors that have already done it before, that'll be in person. At Minuteman, and then on either February first or February second, we're going to be working with Massachusetts Partnership for Youth, which we call MPY. They'll be doing a presentation with us on diversity and race. Following that, we're going to have a bunch more presentations, as you can see, mostly with MPY, but some of them will be with our Minuteman staff. Majority of them are for parents that are happening in the evenings, but we do have some Saturday ones as well. Our staff team has a great relationship with MPY, they come, they utilize Minuteman's facilities. They offer, also offer a lot of training to our staff and also our students, which has been a really great partnership to have with them over the years. We will probably be adding a couple more presentations that will be confirmed in the next couple of weeks, but for now, there's just some presentations we wanted to put on people's radars. Any questions on that?
How well attended are these events normally?
It varies, I was actually speaking with someone who ran some of them last year, and they said, actually, the Saturday morning one. They coincided it with the MCAS prep for our students, so parents actually dropped off their students for the MCAS prep and then stayed for the presentation, which I thought was a great idea.
So we need more MCAS, is what you're saying, okay.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Oh, okay, I just wanted to make sure of that. Erica.
Yes, can you remind me what MPI stands for?
MPY.
Oh, MPY, sorry.
It's the Massachusetts Partnership for Youth. Partnership for you.
Okay, is that like a nonprofit, or can you tell me a little bit more about that?
Yeah, so it's an organization that works with a lot of schools, they offer obviously a lot of education, a lot of presentations, a lot of school safety. It's just another resource for folks who are involved with working with youth in a variety of different settings. But we've had a longstanding partnership with them for years, they've been a wonderful partner for us to provide some professional development for our staff team as well.
Thank you.
And the other questions or comments? Alice.
I'm just really glad to hear about this kind of opportunity. It's. It's not. Well publicized in other school districts, and I'm really glad you're telling us about it, thank you.
Great, and again, I applaud the staff team, they do a wonderful job connecting with MPY and getting these presentations scheduled.
I'm just looking at this list here, and one of the items is. Caught my attention. Which is the social media's impact on mental health. Which is perhaps something that the school committee should also look at and have a presentation on, so maybe we should put that on the future agenda. Because that is very substantial. So unless the committee thinks that's a bad idea, I think I'll have that scheduled for some future agenda in the not too distant. Time. Very good, is that the end of the principals, one more?
No.
Sharon.
Katie, I was just going to say, as a parent who has taken advantage of the Saturday morning drop off your child for MCAS and then go to the workshop. It's very convenient, but also the workshops are very informative and super helpful.
Yep, great, thanks.
There you go, a satisfied customer. But again, we don't need more MCAS, right, okay, I'll keep that in mind, thank you, any other comments or questions? Thank you very much for the principals report, principal.
Yep.
All right, now, fun, we get to talk about money. Finance report, Steve Ledoux.
Alrighty, the finance committee met last Monday, January eighth. Two primary things that. We reviewed was, first of all, proposed superintendent's budget for FY twenty five, which. I believe Kevin will be making a presentation on during the superintendent's report. And we also. Reviewed the bids for the two point eight million dollar bond anticipation note. On the school, as you may remember from a prior meeting. The state has not closed out the building grant yet, so we need to. To carry forward the money through a bond anticipation note. We had two bidders. Who bid, who bid on the note, one was the Piper Sandler Company and the other Oppenheimer. And Company, and our recommendation to the school committee is to award. The bid for the two point eight million dollar bond anticipation note to Piper Sandler Companies. That have a net in, excuse me, net interest cost of four point oh four nine percent and a total premium of two. Two two thousand three hundred and fifty two dollars, so. That's the next agenda, but I would, I would move the award to Piper Sandler Companies, the finance committee unanimously supports this award.
Second.
Hey, any discussion, this is an issue we have mentioned that was coming up. So no surprises, Alice.
It was explained in the packet, but I hope Steve will reiterate for everybody why it is that we have to bond again. One more time.
Well, and Kevin, Kevin maybe has the more definitive date than I have, but, but I believe we're not scheduled. In front of the review for the final closeout, maybe now till. Kevin, July?
It could possibly fall into next August. We're still trying to. Submit our final paperwork, we're very close, and then once we submit the paperwork, we then get in line for the closeout, so. We were hoping it would be done by April, that date has since slipped, given the amount of work MSBA has, so. The strategy here is to continue. To renew the bond anticipation notes until June, we may have more. Clarity on when will be before the MSBA Board of Directors to close out.
We've done all we can do, it's now up to the state, Ford.
Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, but. Once they do close us out, we're going to receive from them. Over, a little over two million dollars?
Yeah, we're estimating it's going to be somewhere around about two point two million.
And so that can be used to pay off the bond, but this is just costing us money with the delay.
Yes.
I've talked, I have talked to them and. There's no reason why it takes so long, but I've been told it just does, so we're stuck.
We have a motion on the table, I believe it's been seconded, any other questions or comments before we move to a vote? Very well then, bring you to the vote, Pam.
Pam Nurse Lacton, yes.
Sarah Montague Arlington, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Ledoux Concord, yes.
Ford Spolley Dover, yes.
Frank Bolling, yes.
Sharon Mostel Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulan Needham, yes.
Alstel Lucas, oh, yes.
Is that the end of the finance report, Steve?
Yes, I mean, I think the next, the next item, which is under the superintendent's report. Is the draft FY twenty five budget, which I will, I will say the finance committee. Has reviewed, we also unanimously support this budget, but we will let Kevin and Nikki make the presentation.
Very good, interim superintendent's report, and on that note, we start with Nikki and the. Formal budget proposal for the school committee, you will not be voting on this today. You'll be voting on this after the open meeting on the twenty ninth, so on the twenty ninth. This will be presented to the public, whoever shows up. And it's then that we vote, we're going to, we take two votes, we vote the budget and we vote the initial assess, the assessments as well. So, but not tonight, tonight we just listen and comment. As the FinCom is done on two or three iterations of this already, so Nikki. You're on.
Excellent, I am going to share my screen. With you all, and Kevin is actually going to start us off with the presentation. Of our FY twenty five Superintendent recommended budget.
Great, thank you, Nikki. And before I start. I just want to recognize the work that Nikki has done. Putting this all together. It's been great working with her on this and. She's really done a nice job, I also want to. You know, when we have these, this budget process, we do try, we do pull in a lot of stakeholders. We do solicit, we ask the, you know, the. The lead teachers and their staff and. Other support personnel to submit. Their budget request, given the guidelines that we issue. And I'd have to say, the spirit of cooperation in putting this together was very, 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 very good. And it made for up to now. And it made for, up to now, a very smooth process. So I want to thank everybody publicly for assisting us with this together. So having said that, why don't we move on and give you the overview of where we're at? This, the finance subcommittee did review this. And we do have one edit that we'll point out, but basically, it's the same presentation that this finance subcommittee voted on. And we always like to start by simply reminding that that putting together a budget more than just putting numbers together to make everything work. We really need to pause and reflect on what we do here, how we do it, recognize that we do it very well. So we try and keep our, our focus on our students and our faculty as, as they do the work that this budget enables them to do. So just a brief reminder of keeping our, the important stuff as we go through the budget process. So when we talk about budgets, we need to tie the school-wide goals. And these are the goals that we presented to the school committee earlier in the year. That was developed with input from the staff and condensed by the administration that we've been working towards. And as you can see, it's increased access to all trial students through focusing on writing and literacy across the curriculum, supported by the universal design of learning. The second good goal is to support Minuteman staff in opportunities to collaborate on integration of in-between academic and career technical education. We talked about that recently. We can keep that focused. And we want to continue to strengthen our internal, external communication to support all students, staff, and family. So just to give you a summary of where we are, when we, to start out, our F Y twenty-five operating and capital recommendation is $31,517,219. This is 3.9% above the F Y twenty-four budget. So when we, when we break that down further, our, our operating recommendation of $24,168,49 is 2.99% over F Y twenty-four. Our capital recommendation of $1,665,08 is 34.1% above F Y twenty-four. We'll talk to that. And our building project debt is roughly $5.7 million, which is 1.36 above F Y twenty-four. As we now go into our permanent debt schedule, which is based on level debt over the 30, 30 years, we'll start to see that debt schedule flatten out, if you will, so that the percentages year-over-year shouldn't be that drastic moving forward. So as a result of this budget recommendation, our F Y twenty-five assessment to member towns is $25,706,710. This, as you can see, is less than 1%. It's 0.88% above F Y twenty-four. Although we were pleased to see that in putting this together, we need to point out that this is not a situation that a member towns could see as a normal year moving forward. There were, there were some considerations that, that drove it to such a modest increase in assessments, and we'll talk to that. So some of the, the budget drivers that we needed to consider when putting the budget, budget together were in the salary accounts. We, we're in, you know, in the midst of a collective bargaining agreement this year, it's a 3.5% increase with steps in lanes included. In addition to steps, I should say. There were three positions that were cut from the, from the district operating budget. But during COVID, but given all the, the grant money that the district had access to, we were able to keep, keep those positions funded just through, just through the grants. Now that the, the grants are starting to go away, if you will, the need for these positions still exists, and we'd like to bring them back into the district budget where they were prior. So that, these three positions are in there as a recommendation. We did add a foreign language teacher this year. We initially had not planned to fund it, but because of, of, of demand, we needed to bring that teacher back. So we were able to identify funds in F Y twenty-four, and we're carrying those into F Y twenty-five. An area that was brought to my attention early on, and has been over the last couple of years, is the need for an athletic trainer for, at minimum, to comply with our M I A A regulations for coverage at certain sporting events. So we've, we've committed about $50,000 towards this position. How this position is going to look, we envision it as one that could not only cover our, our athletic events, but also support our student-athlete training, weight room management, those types of support activities. I will say, folks with these credentials are scarce. It's, it's, we have been advertising both on an hourly basis and as a, as a, as a salary position, we haven't been successful with that, but we do have the funding available. And I suspect at some point in time, we'll be able to close this forward. To offset some of the positions that we're bringing back through grants, we had a, a couple of administrative positions that through retirement and through consolidation of positions, we no longer leave and will be funding going forward in F Y twenty-five. When we look at the non-salary items, in the F Y twenty-four budget, there was an allocation of funds that was set aside for our curriculum development. As we got into the year, in administration change, we paused that curriculum development, but feel as though having the funding available is, is a valuable asset so that when the next superintendent comes in, that individual will be able to have some flexibility on these types of curriculum development. He or she would like to, like to incorporate here at Minuteman. Under our bus transportation contract, we have 5% consumer price index increase per our contract. We're also proposing an additional day for a late bus at 3:30. We have buses late on Tuesdays and Thursdays, but there's been a demand by a number of us too about trying to engage in more opportunities after school, be it additional clubs, also want to take advantage of homework, and with, with the limited availability we have in our bus schedules, the number of days we offer, we felt as though this would provide that opportunity. So I, we just feel that the benefit for students, not only from, you know, participating more and, you know, extracurricular and social activities, that this would really benefit the, the student body. Utilities, we had some early estimates. We adjust those based on what we saw in F Y twenty-three actual and the trends we were seeing in F Y twenty-four. We did have some, Nikki had some conversations with our energy consultant, just to make sure thinking along the same lines as to how, how our forecasting was modeling. In terms of health insurance, we level-funded health insurance. This was because in F Y twenty-four, the current fiscal year, we, we budgeted a 10% increase. Typically, what happens, the health trust will, will, will give us sort of a a market estimate on where we might be of the others, of the other schools that are in the trust. We're first one, first ones out as far as our budget goes. So we typically don't know what the actual rate would be until maybe March or April. And as it turned out last year, which impacted the F Y twenty-four, our premiums were, were, were zero. So in effect, we do have a surplus in the F Y twenty-four health insurance account. And if we roll that forward to F Y twenty-five and then factor an eight and a half percent increase in given our current subscribers, this will be adequate funding, so we didn't need to adjust it. The other area that I, I, I really wanted to bring to the forefront and engage in discussion, I know the finance subcommittee took a look at it, was this issue of cybersecurity. I just really want to make sure that we protect it to the best we can in terms of our cyber, cybersecurity. Drew Connaught has been very helpful working with this. He's looked at a number of different options, and in fact, we engaged, and I was like, something to take a look at what our needs are. And came back with this recommendation, so it's, I'm, I'm really pleased that we're going to be with this investment. I, I think it'll just protect the district in the long run, although it's hard, it's hard to keep up. It's constantly moving, as we all know. Some other items. Capital stabilization. I noticed on the, a few slides back, the increase in our capital funding. This is part of that contribution. We've been funding about $500,000 this past year, and I think the year before. What I'm suggesting is that we fund 850,000, which is a 350,000 increase over F Y twenty-four. If we're able to, if this, if this funding is approved, this will bring projected balance in the capital stabilization fund to about $3 million. We really feel this will position the district to move forward in, in our long-term planning. And if we do have opportunities with potential partners to help with any of our program, any of our space needs, we'll be in a position where we can engage in those conversations if we have the funds on hand, rather than trying to pursue opportunities and seek funding after the fact. So ideally, I, I'd like to see that somewhere between 3.5 and 4 million, but I think this will take us, take us a step in that direction. Not only that, but as the, as the credit agencies, it's, they do periodically renew our, our financials because we do have outstanding debt. They will also be encouraged to see the, a capital set aside of this nature. In, in debt service, just wanted to point out that that the debt service associated with the athletic facility will not be assessed to member towns as we committed back when we, when we sought authorization to borrow for the athletic fields. Those funds will be offset by funds that we've received through renting the facility that have been deposited in the facility's revolving account. And that'll be done each year, to the extent that we do have revenue that, that revenue sufficient to meet the debt service as well as the future capital needs of the facility, which we, we do set aside for field replacement and major maintenance. We do expect that we would be, that's our plan, is to use that revenue to offset the athletic fields. This is the first year we've done it. We were unable to do it last year because we were going through the budget process. We would just bring in the fields online, so we didn't have the funds on hand at the time the budget was started. We feel comfortable, at least in the near term, to be able to support this. Again, subject to how, how the facility rental demand continues to be. Other post-employment benefits are O P E B. We are funding it to the levels to comply with the O P E B study committee. So, which is 800,000 plus $10,000 for each additional F T E we've added. That's a little bit high, but it's, it's sufficient to be able to make that, this contribution. It's an $85,000 increase from F Y twenty-four. In addition to that commitment, we also fund our retiree health insurance of 525,000, which also counts towards post-employment benefit costs. And again, elaborating a little bit more on O P E B, our unfunded liability as 630, 23 is $23.7 million. Our current trust fund balance is about 869,000. So as you can see, we started a long-term funding plan in F Y twenty-three. And in, in, in accordance to that plan, we have funded based on the F Y twenty-five funding plan that was recommended. Some of the strategies that the committee outlined was a 5% increase each year. And then the opportunity to go up $300,000 in F Y twenty-six because our ESCO lease will expire in F Y twenty-five. We've been paying roughly about $425,000 a year. And just for the benefit of some of the newer committee members, the, the ESCO lease was an, was an energy efficiency investment that we made in the old building, where the, the investment was, was intended to pay itself back as a result of more efficient energy cost, and we financed that lease over a number of years. And although the building's no longer there, the lease was, and so we're just kind of finishing that, the payment on that lease, that so-called stranded. So now I'll ask Nikki to take the committee through the next set of slides.
Thank you, Kevin. For all of those non-number people, we'll throw in a graph for you. Major factor that's impacting our budget is our enrollment. So as you will see, with the plans for the new school building, came plans with increasing in-district student enrollment. And as you'll see here, we're successfully meeting that objective. Enrollments for our member towns is this red line, and it has been increasing as our non-member towns is correspondingly decreasing. And with our total here at 686 enrollment for Minuteman. That 686 here is broken out by each grade and then by each town as well. So you'll see the breakout by each class as well as each town for the specific towns details. And as you'll, you'll see in upcoming slides, you know, as enrollment shifts, our Minuteman out-of-district revenue is decreasing both tuition and capital fee, which is set by the state. And as a result, if this continues to trend this way, there will be a result of increasing assessments to member towns in the upcoming two fiscal budgets. This graph has a lot of great detail if we break it into parts. So the first part that I want to describe to you is our purple line across the top, and it's our school enrollment of 628, and that's at 85% capacity. What you'll see in this next slide is our tri-colored bar graph. It includes the total member and non-member enrollment compared to the 85% school capacity. So as you'll see here, we are over our 85% capacity. Blue is the total enrollment, red, the member enrollment, and green, the non-member. Here, the yellow line represents our non-member tuition, and the light blue line represents our capital fee revenue, which we're able to reduce member town assessments. So as you'll see here, it's trending in the opposite direction. And the amount of money that we're able to offset member town assessments with continues to decrease as the non-member students that are attending Minuteman continues to decrease as well. So this next slide shows our F Y twenty-five preliminary assessments for the member towns. This is the slide we amended slightly based on some feedback we've received. We've added this additional F Y twenty-four column for more context to compare to the F Y twenty-five preliminary assessments. And this is comparing to our four-year rolling average of enrollment for F Y twenty-five and F Y twenty-four. As you'll see here on the bottom, as Kevin mentioned, we are at less than a one percent increase in total member town assessments. So when you have such a small increase overall, you'll see that there are more changes between the towns when comparing the four-year rolling average to the preliminary assessments. We've talked that four-year rolling average is often a strong indicator of our operating budget, but there are other factors like the minimum required contribution and the calculation of our capital budget that has a factor too. And there are some other future assessment impacts that I'm gonna ask Kevin to elaborate more on.
Yeah, thanks, Nikki. We mentioned earlier when we, when we showed the, the modest increase of point eight eight percent that that isn't going to be the norm moving forward. We don't want to communicate that to be the case. And there were some things that, that we found as we were going through this process, I wanted to point out. First of all, the adjustment in Chapter Seventy State Aid year over year, it's a factor in this year's budget. We would expect moving forward. Well, let me back up. What we, we budgeted in FY twenty-four. As it turned out, because we budgeted, you know, we have to have our budget done in January and the governor's budget wasn't issued until after our budget was adopted. Typically, the governor's budget is, is issued the last Wednesday of January, which is why in part we try and schedule our public hearing after that date, so we can incorporate any state aid changes into the final recommendations. But last year, we didn't have that opportunity because when a governor comes in, there's additional time granted for that, for that governor's budget to be released. As it turned out, we received seven hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars more than what we had budgeted. So I will get more into how we're gonna handle that when we have the next item on our agenda. But the point I want to make here is we're comparing our revenue categories. It looks like we received a substantial windfall in State Aid FY twenty-five or expect to receive substantial increase, but that's simply not the case. Had we budgeted a little bit closer to what actual was, that, that, that would reflect that way in our percentage increase of point eight eight percent would be probably closer to three point four percent. So I want to make sure that we're not masking the idea that we're able to come up with a zero point eight eight percent, given some of the other changes in our budget. And wanted to point that out. So as we, again, moving forward, we, we hope to reflect more consistency in State Aid. There were some other caveats in the FY twenty-four budget that we couldn't anticipate based upon what the governor through increases that the governor included in Chapter Seventy. So I look at it more as a maybe a one-off year, just had to deal with. We're gonna see a slide that's gonna show that given the, the earlier graph that Nikki showed where we're seeing out-of-district enrollment going down, that we're gonna see a corresponding decline in, in, in out-of-district tuition and capital fee. And so with that trend moving forward, it'll increase member towns, because we're not getting that subsidy to offset the offset the non-assessment capital. And that's a reality I bring to our member town leaders' attention. And then of course, as we talked about a few minutes ago, this is the first year of implementing the the revolving account against the debt service for the athletic fields, which also had an impact, but moving forward, this will be more consistent and it'll have the less, the, the, it won't be as, as much of an impact on the assessment increases year over. Nikki?
Yep. And as Kevin mentioned, with the tuition and the capital fees, these are our estimated projections. If we continue to accept all freshman classes that are made up of member town students, you'll see the decrease in the anticipated revenue available to offset member town assessments. So in FY twenty-five for tuition and special education fee, you'll see almost eight hundred forty thousand goes down to almost three hundred eighty thousand and then almost fifty thousand. So significant decreases as the number of students continues to decrease and matriculate out. The same with the out-of-district capital fee, around two hundred eighty thousand, down to one hundred ten thousand and then to fifteen thousand. So just to really be completely transparent as to what we're expecting in the upcoming fiscal budgets. So we are going to try to wrap up the budget conversation here. Again, just reiterating our operating budget coming in at just under three percent, two point nine nine. And our operating capital increase of thirty-four point ten percent, it's tied strongly to the increase in our capital stabilization request. Lastly, our total operating and capital budget comes in just under four percent at three point nine six percent. This is our non-assessment revenue that Kevin has mentioned. The Chapter Seventy discussion he had here, you'll see our estimates for Chapter Seventy Aid. Again, has a strong increase this year, but will not be anticipating that increase in upcoming fiscal twenty-six and twenty-seven budgets. You'll see our Chapter Seventy-one Regional Transportation reimbursement tied to our increase in transportation. It's an estimate based on what the state will provide back to us. Our prior year tuition is something we've continued to talk about while it does seem level this year will continue to decrease. Our certified excess inefficiency is the amount that Minuteman gives back as part of the excess fund balance or the, the free cash. If you're more familiar with towns, that Minuteman will apply to the budget to lower the min- member town assessments. We've talked in depth about our capital fee and then this line here, facilities revolving rental revenue. This is what Kevin mentioned. We will start to, are starting this year offsetting member town assessments and, you know, plan to, as, as long as the athletic fields continue to be rented, offset this debt. So again, our total member town assessment increased just less than one percent. And lastly, our assessment allocation by category. Our minimum required contribution that's set by the state was up about eleven percent. Our transportation budget is our budget less the reimbursement from the state. Our ESCO lease, this is the last year you'll see the ESCO lease in our FY twenty-five budget, which is very exciting and gives us so many more opportunities for our OPEB funding, which we've discussed at, at length. Our capital equipment leases in athletic fields. Again, that's kind of our operating capital that we talk about. Up significantly due to the increase in the capital stabilization fund to better position Minuteman for future partnerships. And assessments over minimum contribution, down about sixteen to seventeen percent. And lastly, our, our building project, you know, in hopes that we'll close that out sometime this summer and just be on a more consistent basis as far as based on the debt amortization schedules. So thank you so much for listening to our presentation and we're happy to answer any questions you have or hear any comments based on what we presented. Thank you so much.
I'm gonna make a couple of comments and I'm gonna open up to questions. The first comment is that the, the Finance Committee consists of Steve Ledoux as Chair. Sarah and myself are on it as well. We watched presentations like this numerous times. My experience was that after each of these presentations, the members of the Finance Committee made a number of suggestions and that the administration especially, Kevin and Nikki took all those suggestions to heart and we saw them reflected in the next version of the budget. So I thought, I thought, oh, I think that Sarah and Steve would agree with me that I thought it was a very smooth process and we were very, very happy with the way that the administration evolved the budget. Very satisfied with that. Would you agree with that, Steve and Sarah?
I would absolutely agree. You know, they're very responsive. I mean, I, I've been involved with budgeting at the municipal level for over forty years and you know, this is really one of the smoothest processes I've ever been through and, and a lot is, is to Kevin and Nikki's credit. Absolutely. You know, and any suggestion we gave, they, they gave a lot of thought to and, and made appropriate changes and you know, I'm just real happy with the process and the outcome.
Absolutely.
This was your first time, so what do you think?
Yeah, well, having been on, involved in a lot of budgeting on the commercial side, I will, I will say this was a lot less painful. And Nikki had answers for, for all of our questions and she was also a great resource to me and, and taking me through this for the first time. So I appreciate that very much, Nikki. Thank you.
Okay, so many thanks to Steve and Sarah for being part of this Philly lengthy, time-consuming process. I do want to reiterate something that, that Kevin said about that zero. See, they're gonna love you this year because that point eight eight percent increase in assessment, which is what they look at the most carefully, is extremely and artificially low. Next year, it's gonna be, I think, a Philly ugly year because we're gonna have another large drop in, in revenue from out-of-district students. So enjoy the fact that this year, a lot of people are gonna be happy with us because that will not be the case next year. Let me also remind the membership that you will be explaining and defending possibly this budget in front of your FinCom and in front of your town meeting. So if there are parts you don't understand, it would be good to ask them now or later. And if you're gonna need some assistance with those presentations, you should speak to Kevin and Nikki and part of their job is to assist you with these presentations like for an example, I need him, he'll probably go to the FinCom with, if they ask him to without me. I'll probably give the presentation in town meeting, which will be much less focused on the finances. But each town works differently and each town may want to see Kevin, they may want to see you. It depends on your town and you better find out what your FinCom wants. What your town wants for town meeting and start to make arrangements now to make sure that you're able to give both the financial and the other presentation about Minuteman since town meetings aren't that far away and the Fin- Finance Committee is gonna be asking for us really soon now. So keep that in mind. And on that note, any other questions, comments on the budgets? I'll start with Pam.
Thank you very much. And I want to thank everyone who was involved in putting this together. You know, I really appreciate all the hard work and care that went into this. And when I heard about less than one percent increase, I was like, oh, you. You know, Acton is facing a major financial issue this year and I'm like, oh, they're really gonna like that. They asked everyone to come in. You know, very low, all the town departments for their budgets. But then I get to an eight percent increase for Acton and, you know, I know they're not going to be as happy with that. And that's, and I think that, and I know part of that is because you know, because the enrollment from my town has been increasing. So you know, it over the next couple of years, there's a couple of ways of looking at it and one is that there are we're losing the money from the out-of-state, but also some of our towns are picking up the slack and and while that's great, I'm really, really excited that a lot of students from Acton are benefiting from a Minuteman education. There is a financial implication to that as well and the towns that are increasing are carrying some of that back. So I, I do feel, I feel uncomfortable coming in and saying the assessment's going up eight percent. Which I realize is ironic, given that overall it's only going up less than one percent. But given that, and given that it is gonna be a couple of years before things get leveled out, when I was looking at the budget, you know, it really made me think, you know, what, is there any more that we can do? And is this, is this really the time to be increasing the capital stabilization over the five hundred thousand? You know, I, I had a hard time really understanding about some of the positions, the way it was written up in the packet. You know, it looked like we had positions that were grant-funded, we lost the positions and now we're putting them back in the budget. And again, I just ask, is this the year to do that, particularly as we're losing the out-of-state? We have some towns, you know, where that assessment is going up. So I guess I'm asking, is there anything here we can go back and look at again?
Kevin?
I think we tried to articulate where those changes are. I, I think when you really get right down to it, you know, we, 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 we try to justify the basis for each decision. Looking at it from the district perspective, recognizing that if we put together a responsible budget for the district, there will be some member towns that will perhaps benefit. Others may go up, others may not go up as much. So it's always a tough balance when we're, when we're looking at the, the, what's in the best interest of the budget and then how that falls out in terms of in, in, in terms of assessments. And it's, it, 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 I just also want to make it clear that you know, you know, if we cut two hundred thousand, say, as a number, that really may not have as significant effect on some towns versus others. Just looking at and I'm just looking at real rough numbers. Nikki may have been a, can zero in on just looking at two hundred thousand, if we're talking about Acton, that may have thirteen percent of that may be the benefit. So I, I, I'm not sure how material of cut we need to make to really influence what the percent change is because to get that number down would, would, would require an awful lot of reductions. So just trying to bring that into context and, and I know Pam, you and I have, have had offline discussions about your questions and, and I understand them and I heard about some of these issues that were going on in Acton through published news reports and our Town Manager Administrator Breakfast Meeting. But I, I, I just think when you look at this eight percent, which I get is a, is a large number in comparison to what the increases have been over the past five years. They've been double digits for the past five years for Acton. So I think it's a move in the right direction. We let the town know early on, so we're prepared to respond to it. Hoping you can support it, but I, I understand the sensitivity of it and those are just sort of my, my comments on it.
I'm just looking, I just want to point this out. There's a twenty-one percent. It looks like from this chart, the FY two oh two five preliminary assessments that your four-year rolling average is increasing by twenty percent. But your assessment is only increasing by eight and a half percent. So you know, you pay for the students, your brain looks, that looks pretty good to me. If you're in, if your four-year rolling average, which is, you know, your students who are coming, it's going by twenty percent, but your assessment is only going by eight percent, that seems to be a pretty good talking point unless I'm missing something there.
Right, no, and, and I, I don't want to take up the whole school committee to be arguing this. You know, I I did have a question of, is that a change over the prior year rolling average? Cause a twenty percent seemed like a pretty significant change. And I know over the, it's been at least three years since Acton has significantly increased its enrollment.
But the enrollment increase does not, you know, it's a four-year average. So that's, that kind of eases a large increase out. So they're seeing you know, the benefit, the, the impact today and that's not on purpose to not have, you know, people jump off a cliff.
Yeah, my point is, it's been, it, it's a four-year rolling average and if it went up and has been leveled off for a number of years. But I, I can talk with Kevin or Nikki or someone afterwards to get a better But I, I can talk with Kevin or Nikki or someone afterwards to get a better understanding. But, but my point is, again, I, I, I just want to say how much I appreciate all the work that got into, that went into this. That, and while overall, you know, I think this is going to be, there are many towns that are going to be really happy. Um, but it's still going to be, um, difficult for some of our towns, mine included.
Understood. Steve?
Uh, I, I have to be careful what I say, since I used to work in Acton. But, you know, when I was town manager there, I think our enrollment was like 30 kids. Now we're over 90. So I don't know what they really expect. I mean, if those 60 different other kids had gone to AB, they'd have a real big impact on on their enrollment there as well. So I don't know, they can't have it both ways. And as Kevin said, to give them a kind of cut um, that proportionally would be their share, the kind of number they would like, we'd have to have a really huge cut. So, you know, I don't know, I, I, it's, I, I understand your frustration, Pam, and I, and I know some of those folks are difficult to deal with too. So that's all I wanted to say.
Alice?
Um, I think this is a perennial issue for Minuteman. Um, it's, it's been all of the time I've been on the committee that there is a certain community or a certain group of communities that have a significant impact on their tuition. And, um, it doesn't affect larger communities as much as it does some of the small communities. Because if you only have 7,000 people in your town, 750 kids or whatever, and 70 of them go to Minuteman, it, it does have a, a larger impact on the visibility of it. You know, the optics of it at the town meeting is that there's this very small number of kids who are going, and it's costing a lot of money. And so for all those smaller communities, it can be a much bigger issue. Um, if it's a big, big community with 55,000 residents or, or more, um, they don't tend to see this as much, it doesn't, you don't feel it as much. So I, you know, I hear Act, Acton's problem, it used to be Lancaster that we heard from about it, and it is very difficult for the small communities. Um, and I, I just wanted to support Pam and say that I understand that it is very difficult. Um, you know, ours is up, what, 8% or something this year? It's six students. That's because there's a small number of students, and six students is a big amount of that small number. So it, you know, that is, um, it, it's something that's going to be challenging and stow to, to talk about.
Other questions or comments on the budget? Sharon?
So I, I just want to make sure I'm pretty sure that I get this. So essentially, because we have made the decision to ultimately eliminate the out of district students, that's raising the number of seats for in-district communities, which is therefore raising the assessment to the in-district communities.
That and the fact that they're no longer paying because they used to pay money to attend here. So those, so it's a double, a double whammy. You're, you have more students going to the school that you're paying for, plus we're getting less revenue to offset that. And it's going to be another year or two before we're done with that and we've reached the, the, the zero revenue from out of district students. The next year, there's going to be another possibly large drop in that, which there wasn't this year.
Right. No, I, I get that. I guess I was just trying to, like, it's kind of like you said, the double-edged sword. Like, you can have more seats for your students, but it's going to cost you more money. But it's also tricky because, as Alice was saying, depending on the size of your community, five more students from one town is nothing, and five more students from another town is a huge amount. So I was just trying to make sure that I understood it. And then on slide, I think it's called slide 48, the one that talked about, um, where is it? Hold on. Um, yeah, the one that was talking about the operating in capital. So I feel really naive in asking this, but didn't, did Needham and Lexington not vote for the override debt, the debt exclusion override?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. I should have known that. I apologize.
Oh, it's fine.
Alice?
I also wanted to just mention that the out of district student thing is, is an interesting history, and I think we should pay attention to it because, um, initially, the out of district students paid too little money, and it was partly due to an error that was made by the Department of Education in 1993 and then continued into the 2000s. But eventually, a Minuteman did a lot of work to get a capital fee and a special ed fee and, um, I think there's some other aspect to it, but eventually got the out of district tuition to be higher than the in-district tuition. But simultaneously, several communities put a great deal of pressure on Minuteman to make it to be an all-in district school. I want to just note that many of those communities left the district. So although we constantly talk about the importance of never having any out of district students, never bringing in any more, more member towns, all that stuff that we hear, the pressure really came from the towns that left. And if the out of district tuition is actually higher than the in-district tuition, we shouldn't just discount the possibility that somewhere down the line in the future, we're going to have another town as a member, or we're going to have some out of district students again, and it's not the end of the world. So we have to, we have to be prepared to adjust to the reality of the moment. And, um, I personally don't emphasize that we're all in district when I talk to my town because that is what is happening at this moment. But we will see, it's a law, history just keeps moving forward. So, you know, we'll, we'll have to adjust as things go along. But I just wanted to bring that up, that it wasn't necessarily the towns that are represented here that were so dead set in favor of getting rid of all the out of district kids.
Well, along those lines, Alice, like, it just makes me think about, um, you know, the various towns that don't belong to any of the vocational schools. And what about the opportunities for those students? So like, I, I see why we have, like, I understand the pros and cons of having the out of district students and not having them. Um, but.
Well, that goes back to you, uh, having a lottery versus creating more seats, which is the real solution, obviously. Other questions on the budget at this time? Very well then, thank you very much, Kevin. Thank you very much, Nikki. We're not done with you, Nikki. Uh, FY 24, Chapter 70 funds update. Who's going to take on that one?
Actually, uh, I'll address that if you don't mind. Um, this is a follow-up to discussions we've had previously, and we did allude to it in the, uh, in the, in the last, uh, presentation, um, where I did mention that, um, Minuteman received about $781,000 in, um, uh, Chapter 78 that was unbudgeted. Um, uh, that, that's, that's right now not committed. Uh, early on, uh, when we discovered this, uh, at the end of last fiscal year, going into this fiscal year, we did send communication to our member towns who inquired. Uh, some of our member towns inquired about perhaps receiving a, um, uh, reduction in their FY 25 assessment by their prorated amount of the 781. Um, because in effect, by not, by under budgeting it, it increased their, 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 their town assessment. Uh, and there was, uh, some commitment by the district, uh, to look at that once the, uh, state, once the state budget was finalized. We took a look at it and approached it from a little bit different ways, um, recognizing that the, uh, you know, we still had a small portion of the MSBA project that would need to be financed once we receive the MSBA grant. So, um, as was noted in, uh, Nikki's, um, uh, memo to the school committee when we were talking about the $2.8 billion bond anticipation note. What we expect will happen in June is that, that $2.8 billion will come due. I anticipate that we will probably not, uh, have our grant by then. So we'll have to roll, um, uh, a bond to carry that forward. Um, but, uh, what I recommended when I met with the town administrators and town managers is, uh, when that, uh, when we, when we finally get the, uh, MSBA reimbursement, um, we expect to get, um, the 2,235,000, which will leave a balance of 565,000 that we would need to finance over the next five years. Um, so in thinking about that, the thought was, well, when, when the ban comes due in June, why don't we use some of that excess Chapter 70 money and pay off the 565,000 plus the 50 grand we're going to owe at that point? So that when we get the MSBA grant, there will be no outstanding balance on the project. That'll save the member towns about $170,000 a year going out over the next five years. Plus, not require the towns to increase their, um, their tax levy in, in, in excess of two and a half as a result of the, um, of the debt exclusion on the, um, on the project. So when I, I had discussions with all town managers and all town administrators, they all agree that that's a, it's a, a good strategy to use the money rather than rebate it back to the town. So, um, what I, 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 so, uh, we have talked about that from time to time, but I think the only open issue is making sure we had, um, uh, consent from our, uh, uh, town managers and town administrators. We have that. So what that all requires, once we get our E and D number certified by, uh, the Department of Revenue, which I would hope would be early February or so, uh, we would then have to amend the FY 24 budget. I'm planning that in April. And what I would do is I would amend the FY 24 budget to, um, basically, um, appropriate, uh, $615,000, which would be the amount that would come due on, on, uh, June 15th for the bond anticipation note. We pay that against the bond anticipation note so that the only balance we get and carry going forward from June till next September will be the 2,235, which we expect to, to, um, retire that ban when that comes in from MSBA. So of the 781, we would apply 615,000, um, uh, to the, uh, to the outstanding balance, that'll reduce that financing. And then the other 166,000, we'll make a recommendation at that time. But, um, uh, that's our plan there, just a heads up, so that we'll be, uh, talking about that and expect to have it on the, um, April school committee to amend the budget. And again, just to make sure it's, it's clear, we'll be amending the budget, we'll be increasing the budget, but we'll be using, uh, we'll be using, uh, funds that we receive from E and D uh, to offset that. And then when the excess funds from Chapter 70 get closed out this year, it'll, in effect replenish it. So there'll be no, um, no impact to, uh, member assessments in FY 24. Any questions or concerns about that?
This idea has presented both to the Finance Committee and to the School Committee on a number of occasions. I thought it was a very imaginative idea. And, um, and, uh, Kevin got them all to agree to it, which, uh, is quite an accomplishment. Steve, do you have any comments on this as, as Chair of the FinCom? No?
No, I mean, I, you know, Kevin initially had run this by me, I thought it made a lot of sense. And, uh, you know, knowing a lot of the town managers, I, I, I knew they would buy into it as well. I, I think it was a great strategy and, you know, it shows a lot of forward thinking.
No, thank you for bringing this, our strategy to our attention, Kevin, and executing it so well.
Appreciate it. Moving on, moving on to item C. Um, as you know, um, uh, Kate Bouchard has been serving as our interim principal. Um, and the, uh, contract for the interim principal position expires June 30th of this year. Um, so I, I believe, given the timeline, it's appropriate that we, um, formally advertise for, uh, a, a new principal effective, uh, July 1st, 2024. In order for me to, uh, do that, I will need pursuant to my employment contract, which is unique to, um, a typical superintendent's contract. By virtue of my role as being interim, I do need the school committee approval to move forward with posting the position. As I see the timeline right now, um, we would, pending your approval tonight, uh, we would post that position early February with, um, um, qual, uh, with applicants, interested applicants submitting their material sometime around March 1st. Uh, I know Pam's going to talk a little about the search superintendent search committee process. But, um, my expectation is, once we have, um, applications for consideration, if all goes well with the superintendent search committee, uh, I would hope and expect that the incoming superintendent would be able to participate in some of the selection of the principal. That's the idea of timing. That's why I'm seeking this authorization now so that we can get it out there in February.
Let me make the motion, then we can ask questions. Who would like to move to authorize the beginning of the search process for the principal position?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay, further discussion. Kevin, any more comments before I open it up for questions?
No, I know, just the only other thing is sometimes, uh, principals on their existing contracts have, uh, notice clauses that we need to be mindful of, so we want to make sure we get this process done early enough in case a candidate is willing to make the switch over the minute they provide adequate notice.
Right, so the timing, the tricky timing issue is, we want to make sure that we don't lose a pool of principals by going too late. But we also would like to give the, um, hopeful superintendent-elect the ability to contribute to this decision.
That's correct.
Questions and comments? Very well, of that, uh, Alice?
Sounds like a great plan.
Sounds like a great plan. That's a good comment. Bring it to a vote. Pam?
Yeah, I'm Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Montague Arlington, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Willdo Concord, yes.
Wurtz Foldy Dover, yes.
Tyler Cooper Lancaster, yes.
Erin Mostow Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulley Needham, yes.
Alice Stukus Joe, yes.
Item D?
Yes, my, uh, recommendation, I'm seeking approval to, um, hire an interim superintendent of, uh, assistant superintendent of Student Services. And I recommend that, uh, the school committee appoint, um, Dr. Amy Peralt as interim assistant superintendent of Student Services effective February 1st, 2024 through June 30th, that should be 2025, uh, subject to successful negotiation of an employment contract.
Okay, so, uh, I'm going to ask, I'm going to reread it with the right date. I'm going to ask for a motion. Now, uh, there's going to be three parts to this item today. The first is going to be this motion to give us the opportunity to move forward. Then we're going to have a discussion in executive session on a actual possible contract. If that is successful, then when we return to open session, we will vote to approve it tonight. If it is not yet successful, then we'll have to take more time to deliberate on it. But we can wrap this up tonight if the committee so desires with these three pieces. So let me reread the, the motion for some, one of you to make. The motion is to hire an interim assistant superintendent of Student Services. Uh, okay, to appoint Dr. Amy Perrot as interim assistant superintendent of Student Services effective February 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2025, subject to the successful negotiation of a school committee-approved employment agreement. Now, who would like to move that?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
Discussion. Pam?
I just want to clarify, in the, um, it says 2020, June 30th, 2024 on the agenda, but you meant June 30th, 2025.
I believe when I reread it, it said 2025, and I said I want to read it correctly because it's an error in the agenda.
Okay.
Okay. I think I read it right. Did I say 2025?
You did, you did, and I missed the first part.
Okay, great. And the other comments on this?
Uh, if I might, uh, you know, Mr. Chair, um, I think the intent behind this is, uh, is a multiple benefit to this. I, I really do think, um, um, I do have some scheduled time away from the district in February and in March.
um, I do have some scheduled time away from the district in February and in March that I've, uh, talked about with the, uh, with the chair and the offices. And it's important that, uh, that the district, uh, has, uh, uh, somebody that's, that's designated to fill the, uh, superintendent role uh, in my absence. So I think on the short run basis, having that coverage, um, is, is important. Uh, I also think that as we transition in with a new superintendent and likely a new principal, that there should be somebody designated, uh, at a district level that can work, uh, with, uh, with those individuals as they transition, transition in a Minuteman. Um, and I do think that, um, uh, given Dr. Perrot's background with both, uh, at a district level and a building level, uh, she'd be able to benefit both, um, uh, an incoming superintendent and an incoming, uh, principal. And then as we look towards, towards, uh, the long run, uh, transitioning through into, uh, a new school year, I think it would just be much easier to have somebody, uh, working with the new team to sort of, uh, lead that to the, uh, the successful opening. So that's basically the reason why I felt the need to bring this forward to the school committee for your consideration tonight.
And, uh, just as I have, um, uh, mentioned previously, I think this is a great idea. Uh, assuming we can come finish up a contract, I'm very happy that Amy is, is stepping up for this position. Um, any other discussion before we move to vote? We have Charlene.
Um, I also think it's a great idea. I think it's really important to have someone in place, especially when we're getting a new superintendent, um, in place. Uh, but for just the peace of mind of all the parents who are here, Dr. Perrot al- already has such an important role at Minuteman. And, um, I know that there's gotta be enough support in special education that she's not gonna be, um, not that she won't be missed, but, uh, you know, she's in, she's basically going to be taking over a position that she's probably already sort of de facto doing. I'm sure she's assisting, um, you on the day-to-day. Um, but I would also like to hear that there's enough special ed support, um, so that when she needs to fill in for you on days that you're not there, that, you know, parents don't need to worry that there's anything falling through the cracks with their students who have IDPs.
Amy?
Thank you. I think that's a great concern, actually, and it's what I gave a lot of thought of. Um, one of the reasons I am very excited about this opportunity is because it is a, a interim assistant superintendent of student services. Student services being special ed, guidance, and nursing. And for the vast majority of my time at Minuteman, those are the three departments that I've worked closely with and overseen. Um, that being said, I have two amazing special education leads and an amazing guidance lead. Um, they both, all three of them have been in the roles for a very long time. And I feel completely confident that they are gonna continue to support the families in their roles. And I feel like I will have the time to continue to support them supporting the families in those roles.
Thank you. I, I think that's really, really important that parents hear that.
Any other questions or comments before we move to a vote? And we're gonna go with Sharon.
So, am I correct that, Amy, you used to hold this role? And then you didn't, and now you were looking for you to do it again? Is that correct?
Um, almost correct. My, I was the assistant superintendent. No qualifier, just assistant superintendent. Now I'm the director of special ed, and if all goes well, I will be an interim assistant superintendent of student services. So similar role, but different.
Uh, just to, uh, uh, piggyback on that, this is a very, very well-defined role. I think that the, the person chosen for the role is extremely important. Previously, it was not such a well-defined role. This is really well-defined and, and makes a very big difference in how happy we are to, uh, move forward with it. Uh, really well-targeted, I think. Any other questions or comments before we move on? Very well, then bring it to a vote. Pam?
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Montague Arlington, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Willdo Concord, yes.
Wards Follyd Dover, yes.
Charlie Gobralan Pastor, yes.
Sharon Mostow Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulaneeden, yes.
Oh, Stu Lucas Joe, yes.
Very good. More on this a little later in the meeting, so stay tuned.
Thank you.
Subcommittee report. Superintendent screening Subcommittee Pam Norris.
Okay, well, the committee has been meeting. Um, we met last week, finalized the, um, our interview questions and selected the candidates for the initial interviews. We are going to be holding, starting our interviews tomorrow. Um, and continuing into next week. By the end of next week, we, um, if all goes well, we will have, um, finalist candidates to, names to, for, to the, um, school committee. So we, in terms of where the process goes from there, you know, we will be immediately starting with reference checking. Um, we'll be scheduling finalist interviews as well as, um, opportunities for the finalists to visit Minuteman, meet with students, staff, parents, and community members. Um, that will be taking place the first, um, full week in February. Um, if we decide to do site visits, they'll take place a week after and that, um, we are hoping that the school committee can meet by mid-February in order to make a deci- a decision um, on a candidate. Given that, and as long as the weather has cooperated with us for all of this, um, we should be in a situation where we're able to negotiate with a selected finalist by late February, early March. So it's a, um, tight timeline that we're working under. Um, the committee understands it. I just wanna say it's a wonderful committee, you know, very thoughtful, um, you know, listening well to each other. So I, you know, I have a lot of confidence in the committee in moving forward with this to be able to bring finalists to the school committee kind of on the schedule that we've, um, outlined. Um, as long as weather doesn't interfere.
Any, not that we can say much about it, but any questions? Okay, and remember the, uh, the, this, you have the schedule of the meetings in which we are, the school committee as a whole is interviewing candidates, and all those are in person. So keep that in mind, and the decision meeting will be in person as well.
Right. And what, maybe what we can do is, um, send out an email just reminding the school committee of those dates. I'm seeing some nots, so, um, I'll work with Julia to make sure we can get those out.
Uh, is that the end of your report, Pam?
That is the end of my report.
Policy Subcommittee Alice DeLuca.
Hi. So, um, the administrative team has section I and other various policies that MASC has sent us since August through December. And those are, um, those are in process inside the school. Um, I wanna just, uh, try to explain something very interesting that I've learned. By speaking to the school district's council on Jeff's advice, I spoke to the school district council because I had the idea that um, there are several policies, many policies of the three hundred-plus policies that the school district has that could be just a link to the state law or whatever federal regulations we have to follow. And a group of carefully-written keywords so that you could find the policies in our policy manual. And then speaking to the, um, district's council about this, uh, it became clear that there are only thirty required policies. That roughly thirty, he couldn't give me the exact number. He couldn't give me the names of the thirty required policies, cuz I did ask twice. But there are only thirty that we have to have, and just hang on while I get my prop. This is, this is our policy manual right here. Which, I haven't waited, but it's a, it's a lot. And not all of them are actually useful to the school district. So actually, a lot of them we don't have to have, although MASC always sends them out in, in a sense, making you feel as if you have to have them. We don't have to have them. We could have more Minuteman-specific stuff in there. Um, I, I thought of an example today. Um, you know, do we have a complete inclusion model in the school? My understanding is yes. Why not say that that's our policy? Um, then there's no question about it. That kind of thing could be in the policy manual and is not. We have a whole bunch of other stuff in there like flags on desks, um, which, you know, we don't really need to have. So it is possible to have, um, a set of links and key words for certain policies where we don't just regurgitate a reader's digest version of the state law and then have the school district's council check to make sure that our, we're correct. And there are a few where we do have to, by state law, have a written policy, even though we're following the state law. So that information has all been gone over with Kevin and, um, I think there is possibility that we may be able to whittle it down so it's not such a huge headache, and there aren't as many conflicts between our documents and other documents. Um, so that's my news.
And I'm sure that Sharon and Alice are gonna be working on that, and we will be the envy of all of the school committees if they're successful in doing that, because that eliminates a, a lot of possible conflicts that we can have that could get us into legal issues. If there's a, is the difference between our policy and the state law, that could be problematic. And if we have policies on topics that are, are complicated and unnecessary, that could get us into unnecessary trouble as well. So it is, it's not just a editing issue. It is an issue that can have, um, a serious improvement on, um, uh, a number of legal and practical issues that the school faces. That's my understanding of why it's worth pursuing, even though it will be a lot of work. Any questions or comments on the policy discussion? Very well, then. We've come to the end of the regular agenda possibly, but hold on, we have a lot of fun stuff coming up. Three executive session topics. What I'm gonna do now is I'm going to, uh, read, uh, the motion to enter into executive session. Now, Kevin, uh, we're gonna need, uh, with us, uh, Kevin Mahoney, for at least some of it. Uh, Julia? Or not Julia? Is Julia still here? Yeah. Uh, Joshua Coleman, right? He'll be joining us. You gave him a text. He'll be here. Is it possible we may need Amy to join us for part of this, or do you think not?
Um, I've reviewed all the terms that we'll be talking about, um, with Amy, and unless there's a specific question about the job itself.
Should I add her name to the list? We don't have to have her join us, but if we want her to join us, and I don't have her name, then she can't. So what do you think?
Let's, let's add it.
Add it. So four people. Very good. So I move. This is gonna take a while. I move to enter into executive session to return to open session including at least some portion during these, uh, meetings. Kevin Mahoney, Julia, Joshua Coleman, and Amy Perrot. For the following three reasons. One, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation in Lauren Skiartha versus Minuteman Regional Vocational Technical High School, Kathleen Dawson, and Nancy Hool. Civil action number twenty-three dash two-five-nine-nine-C as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Two, to discuss strategy with respect to threatened litigation by George Clement as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Yeah. Three, conduct strategy in preparation for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Dr. Amy Perrot. And after our vote, assuming that we vote to move into an executive session, which I expect, we will close this meeting, move on to the executive session link, have our executive session, close that, and move back to this link for, to continue our open session. Everybody understand? Yes? Okay. So that is the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion of the motion on the table? Very well, then Pam?
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Montague Arlington, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Willdo Concord, yes.
Wards Follyd Dover, yes.
Charlie Gobralan Pastor, yes.
Sharon Mostow Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulaneeden, yes.
Oh, Stu Lucas Joe, yes.
Very good. I'll see you in the other link in a couple of minutes. So I think we're gonna move forward now. Uh, we'll wait for, Ford will hopefully show up shortly. Amy, we have one question for you before I put a motion on the table.
Okay.
Uh, what is the true meaning of what? No, that's wrong. What is, uh, uh, why do you want this job and why do you think you're a good match for it?
Um, those are two very good questions. I want, why I want this job and why am I, I'm a good matcher is probably the same answer. Um, student services is everything that I ever wanna do when I grow up. Um, all parts of it, the special ed, the mental health, working with students, working with parents. Um, it's, it's just what I am. Um, and my, have a big passion for it, which is why I know that I'll be good for it. I also love Minuteman, and I, I'm gonna retire from Minuteman. I love Minuteman, and the idea of helping our new leaders grow their love and their joy for Minuteman, I mean, it's not really a better thing I could ask to do or be part of.
You would say that the, um, the job description as created between, uh, you and the interim superintendent is a excellent match for both your abilities and for your, uh, uh, desires moving forward. Would that be a correct statement?
Yes.
Are any other school members would, would like to ask a, uh, follow-up question for Amy on this, or should we move ahead? Very well, then. I'm gonna ask for a motion. Actually, I'll make the motion. I move that we accept the, uh, contract of employment as, uh, as sent to us and will be part of the um, packet, uh, uh, minutes for this meeting with two changes. The, both changes are in item four. The first change and the first paragraph of item four is to change the number one hundred and eighty thousand to one hundred and seventy-five thousand. The second change is on the second paragraph of item four to change the number from one eighty-six thousand, three hundred to one hundred and eighty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. So that's the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on this issue? Move to a vote. Pam?
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Montague Arlington, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Willdo Concord, yes.
Wards Follyd Dover, yes.
Sharon Mostow Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulaneeden, yes.
Oh, Stu Lucas Joe, yes.
And I wanna repeat again, Amy, we are very pleased that you have, uh, chosen to step up for this very, uh, uh, challenging job description, and we have, uh, full confidence that you're gonna be successful in doing it.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Okay, so our, I think our business is more than done for today. And unless there's somebody wants to do something else, I'd like a motion to adjourn, please.
Move to adjourn. Second.
Last time tonight. Pam?
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah.
Sarah Montague Arlington, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Willdo Concord, yes.
Wards Follyd Dover, yes.
Sharon Mostow Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulaneeden, yes. Alice is on mute, so we can't quit the Alice is on mute, so we can't quit the meeting, I guess.
Alice DeLuca, grow up, Jeff. Alice DeLuca Joe, yes.
Not gonna happen. Thank you all. It's been a very long night. We're all a little punch drunk. Good job, good work. Congratulations, Amy.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you.
Superintendent, we'll talk soon.
Good night.
Thank you, Julia.